Okay, we'll have a moment inside meditation and pledge to the flag.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. It is Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our administrator, Renata McClure. Good morning.
Morning, Renata.
Thirty-nine exonerations for seventeen thousand four fifty-six thirty-nine. One request to create a new statement, hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Minutes for September 18th, 2024, vouchers, General County, seven hundred and fifteen thousand four eighty-one forty-seven, nine-one-one forty-eight seventy-five, Chestnut Ridge Park, six sixty eighteen. Payroll, one million one fifty-one four oh-three forty-five, ARPA, five thousand one sixty-nine. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, sixteen thousand six ninety-five sixty-two, nine-one-one two twenty twenty-two, Chestnut Ridge Park, six fifty-five, assessment evaluation, sixteen thousand one fifty-five seventy-four, for a voucher total of one million nine hundred six thousand four eighty-nine forty-three. No budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the website and fiduciary orders for September 25th, 2024.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any additional fiduciary items?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, introduction, new employees, personnel changes.
The first one we have is for the K-9 Adoption Center. Nicholas Kreider will be filling the vacant deputy dog warden position effective October 1st. Salary is set at thirty-three thousand five hundred annually, six-month probation.
Move to approve the new employee, Nicholas Kreider, as a deputy dog warden, full-time.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You guys.
I'm sorry, I have a friend and we called him in the band Deputy Dog.
Deputy Dog, okay. Then for our facilities staff, we have Timothy Nicholas Johnson. He goes by Nick, so if you guys meet him in the future. Maintenance three position in the facilities department effective October 1st. Full-time, non-exempt benefit eligible. Salary is set at three thousand eight thirteen thirty-three per month with a six-month probationary period.
Move to approve Timothy Johnson, Nick, to the maintenance crew.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And then one that's not on the agenda, the sheriff called about on Monday. Joseph Fox, a full-time court security officer, would be hired effective October 1st pending firearms qualification. He is eligible for benefits and his salary would be three thousand seventy-six dollars and thirty-eight cents per month.
Move to approve Mr. Fox as a court security officer.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any additional ones?
Nope.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We'll now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise your hand, come forward.
Howdy, guys.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mary Ann Foles, eight twenty-eight, Bloody Run Road. I want to talk again about Scott Avenue. I don't know how many of you watched last night's city council meeting, but it sounds like the city of Morgantown is going to annex Health Right into their jurisdiction. I'm vehemently opposed to that, but that doesn't sound like there's anything you or I can do about it. They have the right to take it. I don't know how that can be, but it is. I am requesting, when Health Right opens up there, that you all work with your sheriff, I'll go talk to Mr. Palmer as well, and ask that you guys start doing patrols up there along with the city because, you know, there is an increase in crime. There is an increase in folks walking along that road. And as you know, there are numerous households up there, family households, lots of kids, lots of teens. And, you know, in the state with the worst opioid problem in the country, the last thing we need to be doing is is putting our youth in harm's way. And that's what's going to happen as drug users and drug dealers move further into that neighborhood. I also would ask that someone go down and address what's happening in the woods down there. I realize it's private property, but there are pretty big encampments down there. Somebody's even built like a little house down there. A lot of drugs are moving through that area and it's just going to continue to get worse. So if it's not going to get addressed by you all, you know, having responsibility for Health Right, at least you've got the rest of Scott Avenue, and I'm asking that you, the current sheriff, the future sheriff, Morgantown Police Department and City Council, anybody who's going to listen, you know, you got to get this under control. Otherwise, all we have done is moved the problem that exists on High Street and Spruce Street up to Scott Avenue where we have five to six hundred people who live, several of whom, or many of whom, are children. So that's my speech for the day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Close the public session. Next item on the agenda is grants. Colleen Coon, our commission office manager, good morning.
Morning, Colleen.
I have a request for reimbursement for the community development block grant in the amount of one thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and eight cents.
Move to approve the president signing the community development block grant.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondence. Notice from the Montague Conservation District regarding the annual fall awards banquet to be held on October 17th. Self-explanatory. Do we have any other correspondence?
Yes, sir. I received an email from Vincent Kitch, who is the, let me see his title, Director of Arts and Cultural Development for the city of Morgantown. It's a summary of the 2024 Ruby Summer Concert Series and...
Would you mind reading that? It's not too long.
It's a whole page.
What I read was...
How about I just read the first part, the top part paragraph?
I didn't think it was that long.
Wanted to reach out this morning and thank you again for your generosity in supporting the Ruby Summer Concert Series. We could not do it without you, or we could not do it with you. I think he meant without. And all our sponsors, and I am truly thankful for your involvement. I will be giving a presentation to the city council committee of the whole tomorrow evening, so that would have been last night. I would be happy to attend a commission meeting to provide an overview presentation. If you would like, please let me know.
Okay.
So I didn't know if you all wanted him to come and give you an update. I mean, he pretty much gave everything in the email, there was a whole packet attached to it. So if you want me to schedule him, I can.
I don't see a need, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, I watched it at the...
Yeah, I watched it at the city council.
Review the packet and you still want him to come in.
It's a great series this year.
And then the sheriff forwarded me the mutual aid agreements that he has with the municipalities and the other law enforcement agencies in the area, just to have them file.
Okay, that's the fully executed agreement, right? I think everybody signed off on that.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all, thanks.
Okay. Listen, do you have any correspondence?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none. New business. To consider for approval, requisition number thirty-two for Series 2020, 2021 B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
The requisition is five thousand four eighty-six forty, and those funds will be paid to Adrian Enterprises and the Thrasher Group.
Move to approve requisition number thirty-two for payment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to set dates for the first and second reading and public hearing for a proposed amendment to the Montague County Tower Ordinance.
Okay. So we are proposing that the first reading be held on October 9th. The second reading would be, and public hearing would be held on October 16th.
Okay.
Move to approve those two dates.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This was, just real quick, the amendment to the ordinance simply lessens the amount of space required outside the fall zone of the tower. Currently is two hundred and ten percent.
Two hundred percent.
Two hundred percent, dropping to one-ten. So we have had the most restrictive, or one of the most restrictive ordinances in the state, and it seemed, it was deemed superfluous at this point, so that's why the action has been requested.
So we have first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wasn't sure if we took that, but, all right. Consideration to set dates for the first and second reading and public hearing for a proposed map amendment to the West Run Planning District zoning ordinance to a property described as Morgan District Tap Map, Tax Map 4E Parcel 26.1.
If you recall, this was read into correspondence last week, so we've had a chance to look at the calendar, and it looks like the first reading would be October 16th and the second reading and public hearing would be October 23rd.
Okay.
Move to approve the setting of those two dates.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve letters of support for grant applicants to the West Virginia First Foundation for Lauren's Wish Addiction Triage Center and West Virginia Sober Living Solutions.
Move to approve the president signing the letters of support for the two organizations listed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve a right-of-way and easement agreement as requested by the Morgantown Utility Board for property owned by the Montague County Commission at Myland Park, described as Grant District, Map 6B Parcel 3.10 and 3.11.
This is by our building at the Mon County Center at Myland Park Campus?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I've moved to approve the right-of-way and easement agreement as presented.
Second.
Okay, and this is a agreement, we already have a right-of-way agreement with a gas company for a line, and this is for the water line that's going to be extended to the new KOA campground.
And my understanding is they've agreed to restore the ground to its prior condition after installation of the line, so...
Yeah, and we had the agreement vetted by our legal counsel and everything. Everything is to our liking, so. We have first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider for discussion and approval, the application submitted on behalf of the Alpine Street Community to the Montague County Orphan Road Grant Program.
Well, I guess do discussion first or make the motion first?
Well, I think what, and again, I wasn't at staff reports, but I believe the motion would be to approve the Alpine Street Orphan Road Grant Request as presented with a total commission contribution of up to eighty-two thousand four hundred.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Yeah, this is a very troubled road, Alpine, it's just over the hump coming up from Mon General. It's one of the worst roads I've seen in the county. It is one that was essentially abandoned decades ago by the developer, and it's basically impassable. There are some nurses that live on that road that have trouble getting to work, as well as anyone else passing the road. It's a very steep road, we had some drainage concerns. We had the petitioner address those with an engineer to make sure that there would be proper drains and a collection area for that water as it comes down this very steep hill, and also a cross drain to catch it halfway down the hill, water that's simply running down. So it's been a long time, Mr. Jackson is the petitioner, is one of the residents there, and he's been here many times requesting, and we've gone back and forth, back and forth, and their hope is to get this project completed before winter. So, and then an important note was a requirement of this program we have is that once the work is completed, that road will be taken over by the homeowners association that, where these homes rest. They wouldn't take on the road before because it was so deplorable. So going forward, the full responsibility of maintaining this road will fall on the collective homeowners association for that street and several of those streets around it that make up that area. So that's one of our requirements when we engage in these requests, is to make sure that it's not a problem that lands back on our desks in the future. Correct.
It also meets the other requirement, which is those individuals on the road are contributing to, to help fix it. And probably, I would agree with you, it is probably the worst road in Montague County. It makes Highland Avenue look like a steam, like real nice place. I mean, you can't even drive on it. You will not be able to drive on it this winter.
There are roads, I would say, that are certainly worse in rural areas, but for an urban area like this, that close to a hospital, that close to a main artery, it's really kind of shocking when you see it.
I'm going to go back and read a few notes from whenever we first created the orphan road program. "The Montague County Commission recognizes that the orphan road program in Montague County is probably the worst in anywhere in the state. It is important that orphan roads are not a problem, that are not a problem created by the state, its counties, or its municipalities. They are created when developers or individual property owners decide to build a structure, most often a residence, off a state road or outside municipality because the land was less expensive. There are little, if any, enforced building codes, and there are fewer property taxes, permits, and fees. Some of these situations were historically addressed with the formation of homeowners association, which were to maintain the community infrastructure. In almost all cases, these homeowners associations were undercapitalized and rarely, if ever, fully funded replacement reserves for the aging infrastructure. Fast forward a few decades, the roads begin to deteriorate, and in recent years have reached a crisis point where the health, welfare, and safety of residents are becoming threatened. A lot of these residents purchase these residents and have an inherited problem necessarily of their own making. The commission is committed to exploring options such as countywide land use and subdivision regulations to help address these issues in the future. But the orphan road problem is real and significant, it's not going to fix itself. That's why we developed this program. And we're willing to work with all the partners and DOH in specific to this request. We've had three requests of the orphan road grant program so far, so this is the third one that we're actually approving. And I do want to applaud Mr. Jackson, who put in his request back when we awarded the other two, back in 2021, and has continuously pinged us for possible solutions to this. So I applaud his stick-to-it for wanting to get this problem fixed. And you're right, we start, when we first started this program, he gave us an estimate that was about forty thousand dollars that would have just paved the road, and when we went up there, we looked at it and we're like, you know, two springs from now, all this pavement is going to be over the hill. So we challenged him to fix the problem, the root of the problem, and fix the drainage to the side of the hill because the road slopes like this and there was a bad drainage issue. So this revised proposal, though more expensive, fixes the problem a little bit more long-term than just slapping a coat of asphalt on an already bad problem. If they didn't fix the base, it was just, the problem is going to keep reoccurring. And as you indicated, yeah, we're willing to help these instances, but we're willing to help, and then they need to figure out how they're going to take care of it going forward. And a little bit of the numbers behind all the three different requests, though there are less affected houses by this request than any. The contribution, the people that are contributing are contributing more than any of the other requests. Generally, we ask for about a fifty-fifty split, and that's what we did with Bridge Road. We were about twenty thousand short of a fifty-fifty switch. Pine Crest, we were about, we were right at fifty-fifty. Bridge Road affected forty-nine houses, and the community got together to come up with forty-seven thousand four hundred to fund that project. Pine Crest affected about three hundred and eighteen different entities. There was seventy homes in Pine Crest Village, eighteen homes in Farm Brook. Farmview Road, which didn't have any association, but led to that, was about six homes. Pinnacle Town Homes was twenty-four homes. Pinnacle Apartments was about two hundred apartments, all affected by that. So when you factor that in, it was about, they raised forty-three thousand for the project. The total cost of the project was eighty-seven thousand. Alpine, their total cost is nine thousand nine hundred, and they contributed, they raised nine thousand five hundred. But between the six homes that actually contributed money, that's about fifteen hundred dollars each, so...
In addition, Mr. Jackson also paid for the engineering study.
Right.
An additional figure to that, so it's over ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they certainly have tried to come forward. It would have been a massive undertaking to try to come forward with half of, you know. So we have general guidelines, it's not a steadfast number that somebody, that they have to come up with fifty percent. But in this case, their willingness to work, and again, being right in the middle of the, right in the middle of the city almost, and so close to a hospital, in winter it'd be impossible to get emergency vehicles out of there, trash vehicles out of there.
Plow to both.
Plow, it'd do no good to plow it, you know, so we felt that this was important, that we lean in and contribute to this project.
There was one further caveat that we had placed on these funds, is that the funds be administered by the homeowners association. We don't pay contractors directly, it has to feed through an entity. So in this instance, the homeowners association over there is going to administer the funds for us.
And again, not to harp on, you know, if we don't have any planning, this is going to continue to happen, and I'm not, you know, I'm going to immediately get a text from, within two seconds. You know, we're not talking about zoning, we're just talking about when people are going to build developments like this to have a conversation with our planning office, so they do it in the right way. When I took DOH out to Pine Crest and was showing them the road, because we asked, and again, with all these projects, and I would welcome that there's a connected part that's actually DOH property that this project doesn't touch, and I would welcome DOH to go out there and be part of the solution to fix that area also.
There is a plan now to work on that, so, with the private developer in the state, so...
But we went to Pine Crest and the DOH guy looked at me and said, where all these houses come from? I mean, because once you, you just do a road and build one house, and then there's nothing to stop anybody from a situation that sits out there, and that's a dangerous situation. You have one way in and only one way out. There's not multiple egress or anything like that. So anyhow, this is just a larger conversation that we'll have in the future, but we're proactively trying to address, I think we ought to proactively try to address these things rather than reactively, which is what we're doing here. But again, we understand that a lot of the residents and people that live in these houses, it's, they weren't part of the problem years ago. They bought a house and inherited these problems, so anyhow. Anything else?
No.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Miss your music?
Good morning.
Mr. Sessner, how are you?
Good. Just want to get a reminder out to our taxpayers regarding October 1st and the vehicle tax credit. That's been out, I know we've seen it on the news and it's been there, but just as a reminder, that paying before October 1st allow them to get credit on their, filing their income tax next year for '24. They can pay half, they can pay the half before October 1st, and they can pay the second half before December 1st in order to still get the credit, because it runs in the calendar year. Just wanted to make sure we continue to get that message out so everyone can take full advantage of this, of this bill that passed and begin this year before it runs out.
And I completed my personal property assessment online. It was fantastic, very easy.
So you went all the way through and got your confirmation?
I got it, got everything, we're good to go. So I didn't have to go upstairs and wait and sit there and have them say, I should have done that six months ago. And I said, I know, but we've got it done.
Well, we submitted out reminders last week, and last Friday, we had six hundred people file online after receiving their reminders, so...
I was with it.
Thanks for a reminder about the tax rebate.
Yeah, it is important.
I had to have my notes remind people, but thank you for...
Well, it's been confusing, so I just wanted to make sure...
And thank you for the ease of, not to blow smoke here, but since you've come into office, it's gotten so easy to do things upstairs, and it used to be an arduous process, you had to come in and go a long time. It really has revolutionized the way that works for the citizen, just dealing with those types of things. And I know, I've told you that before, but I want to say publicly, thank you for your team putting that into place.
Yeah, yeah, they do a good job with it, so I appreciate that, and I'll make sure I pass that along to them, too. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Petsko.
How are you? Last week, myself and the county parks superintendent attendants went to the West Virginia Recreation and Parks Association Conference in Kanane Valley. This was our fourth time attending this conference, and while we were there, leading up to that, we applied for award with the West Virginia Recreation and Parks Association. So I brought with me today Doug Comer, he is the superintendent of Clarksburg City Parks. He's also the awards chair for the West Virginia Recreation and Parks Association. So Doug had a few words he would like to say, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Doug?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for having me be here. Again, I just, we take, you know, take a lot of pride, a lot of seriousness, what we do. You know, our job out there is to create recreation, you know, look outside the box, and, you know, what JR did with this project with the Mason Dixon Park Trail, Historical Park Trail System is definitely something we looked at. We had, you know, a slew of nominations out there, and through careful consideration, we looked at two and that were finalists, and one would be the Bluefield, City of Bluefield, with Rick Scholwalter and his Fun Zone Playground for an All Abilities Area, I guess. And then, secondly, with the Historical Trail System with JR. You know, JR's doing some great things out here, it definitely gets noticed throughout the state, and he put a lot of time into this, like I told him, I thought he would get his doctorate after sending me this dissertation. I'm joking about it. But anyway, I just wanted to come up and show my support and show all the good things he's doing, and like I said, present him with the James McClellan Parks, Public Parks Recreation Facility Award, which goes out to outstanding programs, outstanding projects in the community. And, you know, if you guys have had a chance to read this, or definitely put your eyes on it. Talks about all the volunteer work, all the, you know, all the hours of time that we put into making things happen like this. And anyway, like I said, he did a great job, and obviously he's deserving of the award, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Just real, real quick, we all know that I'm not huge on my name being out there on things, because it is not just me. There's a slew, this is a project that started in 2016, and I just want to recognize real quickly the folks who are really important to make this project happen. First off, we want to celebrate the West Virginia Society of Professional Surveyors. They built a third crossing area for folks who cannot make the arduous trip to the top of Brown's Hill to visit history. They can do that off the green trail. We also want to recognize the local Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. We had five Eagle Scout projects that went into this over the last eight years. Members of the local community, we've, we literally had over a hundred volunteers over the last eight years that contributed to this project. And I can't leave out Sarah Pennington and her class at North Elementary. They're responsible for the Space Trail, is a wonderful thing that was in addition to our Ferry Door Trail. And finally, everybody's heard me talk about the Ferry Door Trail for years. I want to thank Eddie Mayer, known as Eddie Spaghetti throughout Morgantown. The Blackburn family, they have been crucial over the last years to continue their effort to make that something for our children here in Montague County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know you mentioned her at the beginning, but of course, Angela, your superintendent out there...
I'm sorry, that's terrible, terrible, terrible. I did forget Angela and her staff. They are crucial because with the weather, we have these strong storms anymore. We don't go a week without a tree falling on a trail or something in that nature, or just keeping the grass cut. You know, they are vital to keep it open for our users. And last thing, you know, we developed this trail system to not only allow people to go and escape, you know, their lives and take a walk. We built this to bring events to our facility. I'm not sure if you're aware, two weeks ago, Clay Batel Middle School had their cross-country meet. They had eight teams show up, and it was received very well.
Eight teams, you said?
Eight teams.
Wow.
Yeah. The middle school coach is going to be moving up to high school, and we hope to continue that relationship with the middle school and then also bring in the high school event as well, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, JR. Thanks, JR. Thanks, JR.
Anyone else? Okay, go to reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just a few things. Touching on the map amendment that we placed on for public hearing this morning, I'd just like to commend our planning office and the, and the citizens that came forward for the public hearings, they had to consider this request. They really, a lot of the neighbors in that area, it's the, it's the neighborhood, neighborhood nearby the stadium by Tanglewood Development, and there's a, there's a proposed project for, for housing there. And the, the planning commission, as well as the developer, all listened to all the concerns from the citizens, and they've made incredible concessions to make the project more user-friendly. They're going to improve the road, make it safer, it's kind of a dangerous road as it is now. There's a plan for a covered bus stop that will help the folks that live in Tanglewood. It's going to fix a major drainage problem that's been present over there for quite a long time. And the developer really did listen, and has gone kind of above and beyond what probably would have been required to shove down, and it's, they would be a force group, and they really have, they've really stepped up and added a lot of things to that project to make the neighborhood happy. So, nobody likes necessarily a, a green space next to their house being turned into a development, but it's, it's a free market society, so it's going to happen, and he's doing the, he and they are doing the best they can to help address these citizens. So I thank the planning commission for really working through that. This is kind of the way planning should work, when, when concerns are brought up, they're heard and then addressed, so. And Scott Copan, the engineer on the project, had a lot to do with that as well. Thank JR for coming in, that's, that's great, great work out there for you and your team, and Angela Heinemann, our superintendent out there. Hopefully, we'll be getting some, something worked out at Camp Moffley, get some more, we have some trails out there now, we're going to expand that system going forward, so that, that's on the big things to come. And there's some, some other big things to come at Mason Dixon Park in the next, in the near future as well, so we're working on, that'll be announced at some point. Just to address a couple of things that were said in public comment, the annexation proposal for Health Right is not something that has come before us as yet, as first we've heard of it, but it's not the city taking what it, what that would amount to be an annexation by petition. So if, if a property owner wants to be part annexed by it, there's not a lot that can be done. I mean, if the, if the city's willing to accept the property, and the petitioner wants it to be petitioned, then there's a, there's a mechanism in statute for that to happen. So it's not something that necessarily requires a full-on decision by us. And as far as patrols from the sheriff's department that would, if it were annexed, that would be city property, and would be more than likely something handled by the city police department rather than the sheriff's department, but again, that's up to the city and the sheriff's department to decide, so that's all I've got.
I only have one, one issue, and I want to thank, personally thank Earl Gaskins, the new district four interim director, and also Ms. Dooley from Charleston. An issue came up Monday night at four-thirty, when it was leaked out that the northbound and southbound lanes of US 119 will be closed, and the intersection at 119 and Route 73 will be closed for four days, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which would have been in thirteen hours. Making numerous calls, neither Mr. Gaskins or Ms. Dooley even heard about this. It seems as though that the individual company that's doing the core drilling sent an email to Charleston, and someone in Charleston came up with a news release, but forgot to send it out. So, fortunately, Mr. Gaskins, Ms. Dooley, after working with them, decided that it would be imperative not to close the road for twelve hours every day because of the sixty buses, the emergency vehicles, and that being the only north-south entrance to the city of Morgantown. They now have flaggers there, and it's only closed temporarily during the time they do the core drillings. But I really want to thank them, they worked after hours, we got it all worked out, and as Mr. Gaskins says, he was surprised, and I learned about it before any of them, and I was very appreciative of the work and relationship.
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, I had our quarterly meeting with WV Corp. That was held virtually, and then Friday morning, I went down to Stonewall Jackson, and we had our annual meeting. Out of that meeting, I was elected to another term, so now I have another, I believe they're five-year terms to, to serve in that position. There are seven commissioners in the state that serve on that board, so out of the hundred and sixty-nine, there are only seven of us that are represented on that board. And it's, it's actually pretty interesting, and it's right up my wheelhouse, so I really enjoy participating, and I learn a lot about what the other counties are doing in terms of insurance, as far as the issues they're facing, and the counties that are doing well, and the counties that are doing not so well, and always happy to hear that we're in the not-so-well category, as far as, I mean, well, we're in the, we're in the well category, the not-so-well category. So anyhow, I appreciate my colleagues voting me to serve another term. Yesterday, the administrator and I had our HR call, our, our bi-weekly HR call. Today's a regular day, we have a couple work sessions. Tomorrow, I have health department, and in the afternoon, I have a broadband call with our local ISP that wanted to explain their, their, what they're doing in the area. Friday, we have staff reports, and then I have the Comcast team broadband call. Other than that, I don't have, I was going to remind people about the personal property tax, but Mark, you took care of that. And JR, thank you for all your efforts. It really doesn't go unnoticed, and your colleagues are only, only telling us about what we've already known, so thank you and all your staff. Relay that thanks to Angela also. I know she's on a well-deserved vacation this week, so don't bother her while she's on vacation. Other than that, and thanks, I really appreciate the persistence of Mr. Jackson at, at times. You know, it was like, Derek's here again. Because we really struggled with what to do with that project, but I appreciate him working it, and working it, and working it, till he got something that we could live with, that was also long, sustainable, or at least for enough years, so that his, his group can take care of it going forward. And I think it's a, it's a, it will make a good thing out of, out of a bad situation, so, and I'm happy that we have that program to be able to help our citizens. So, having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.